County Commissioners Board of Work Session. We are back from break. It is 1:32 PM. We are continuing the Budget Review Work Session that we started this morning. And we left off with the policy, I believe it was page 13 when we left off.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully people can help me remember to change the page this afternoon. Try to be a little better about that. All right, so picking up on page 13 where we left off. Page 13, the line number is 37. 37 and 38 are both related to the request from CPED to contribute $60,000 to the Fair Fund. This would be $60,000 a year. And it would come out of General Fund into the Fair Fund. And CPED is concerned that the ending fund balance in the Fair Fund is too low. It's not sustainable. I will say however, that Jennifer and I will be working with them over the next couple of weeks. And then the Fair Fund you'll see is on your review list for early October. So we're looking on this one.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'll ask Commissioner Edwards because you're on the Fair Board, sir. Is this something that the Fair Board discussed? And is it something that they're in agreement with or what their general comments are?
They did not discuss that at a meeting that I was at. They may have discussed that with Josh, I would guess. But it looks like there's a history here. And I can tell you, there always is great to get by, always. And so I'm always looking for other areas other than General Fund. And I look for other areas on this one as well, if possible. I don't know if those funds can be made available from anywhere else. But we've got that. If we do something here, it's going to be a one-time except for all the years that follow.
I mean, is there... My next question, I guess, to that Commissioner Edwards. And this question is for Robin. Is there a possibility to give them like an extra boost, right? Because they were closed from ARPA because they were affected during the pandemic and they couldn't continue regular business. Is it a possibility that we can give them like a bigger grant? Just kind of as recovery for those two years where they suffered a huge loss? Is that something that we've looked into? And I know it's one-time funding compared to ongoing funding, but a little bit helps in the long run.
So I think we did some of that. In addition to reduced revenue, they also had greatly reduced expenses. When you don't run a fair, you're not paying for the supplies and the vendors and the extra help. And all the other things that go into a fair. But I believe that the Board did transfer funds into the Fair Fund to support the fair.
But I don't think it was CRF.
I do believe it was CRF, Coronavirus Relief Funds, in 2020 that we did that. Now they're asking for $60,000 every year. So when we bring the financial plan, let's take a look at how much do they really need? And then we can have a conversation about where that might come from. There, I would say that in the past, because there is a history with the fair. In the past, we transferred the bulk of our LTAC money, Lodging Tax Advisory Council. We would transfer the LTAC money, almost all of it, to the fair every year. And then the state law changed. And the state law now requires that we have an LTAC committee. Commissioner Edwards chairs that at this time. That the committee accept applications for how the money is going to be used. The fair is one of many recipients for that funding. And in the last round, the amount to the fair was reduced. So the fair is not, it's quite a bit less than it was historically going to the fair from the LTAC fund. But let's take a look at the financial plan, see what's actually shaking out. And at that point, you can determine how much and we can talk about where that might come from. All right. On page 14, we start in with Medic 1. This continues on to page 15. And Medic 1 is asking from the Medic 1 Fund, this is not General Fund, for $650,000 that goes toward their advanced life support increase in the contract operating cost. And this is unanticipated. You've talked to Ben over the last few months about the contract negotiations. So there is a substantial increase tied to this contract.
And they've got revenue to do this.
Oh, yes. They have. They get a 7% levy increase every year.
And that board wanted to move ahead.
So Medic 1 is in support of this?
Yes.
Do you have any Ms. Counsel?
They have, I will say, all of the Medic 1 items have been reviewed by the Medic 1 Council. Now we're on page 16. Catch up on screen. Also from Medic 1, out of the Medic 1 Fund. This is $25,000 for the basic life support portion of the contract. Moving right along to page 17, also Medic 1 Fund. $189,000 for equipment replacement. This is an increase in the cost for parts, services, and medical equipment related to the equipment that they need to perform the services that they provide. And there is sufficient money in this fund. Line 42 is also Medic 1.
No, that's Emergency Management.
Sorry, Emergency Management. Thank you for catching that. I was trying to turn the page. So this is General Fund for Emergency Management. And this is the unanticipated cost for radio replacements. They are requesting... Leave what this says is that when TCOM upgraded their radio system, radios were not included for emergency management. So this is $56,000 for radios that would be compatible with the new TCOM system. I think that's what this is saying. We're going to look into this.
Is the antenna under the station?
I'm not quite sure. We're going to look and get a better feel for exactly what this is.
I don't know. There's a possibility that I think some of that radio money might be able to be involved here. I don't know that.
What's it?
Medic 1 funding?
No, when they upgraded, the funding they used for upgrading all the law enforcement and fire entities. I don't know why Emergency Management couldn't fit in that element somehow. I'm just saying.
You need to talk to the TCOM folks.
Sure, sure. I think it's worth exploring rather than General Fund.
There we go.
Because the taxpayers are footing the bill anyway.
That is a fund that is managed by the Board.
Which fund?
The Medic 1 Fund. TCOM. It's the money that goes to TCOM. Page 18, line 43 is an increase in the amount of money that is transferred from the General Fund to the two existing Lake Management District Funds, Long Lake and Lake Lawrence. And so it's $5,000 is the amount of indirect that would be covered in addition to what's currently covered for the indirect cost for those two funds. And it's in policy level because it is up to the Board whether or not you want to continue to do this.
And we're not going to make that decision today, is that right?
No, no decisions today.
Information.
This is your first look at what's in here. The next item, line 46, is we have been discussing that the Patterson Lake Management District, it's... The timing is not as early as they had hoped. I'm going to say it that way. So what this item does is take $165,000 from the General Fund, deposited into the new Lake Patterson Lake Management District Fund because each of these management districts has their own fund so that they can begin work. So the policy decisions here is number one, do you want to make this transfer? And number two, do you want to make it a loan? And the idea of it being a loan, I think that some of the considerations... Do we know if $165,000 is the amount that they anticipate to collect each year?
I would have to ask Karen.
Okay. If this is how much they're going to collect, then every year they need a loan. If, so... The Board loans them $165,000 in 2023. They have to pay it back in '24. And if that's all the collection they're going to get in '24, what money would they use to operate in '24? It would become a revolving door.
Do you think they're asking for that whole amount or just some seed money to get the go?
They're asking for the $165,000. It's right there. And so what I don't know is if that is the full amount of collections that they anticipate. If it is, you might want to think about, is that really what you want to do?
That seems a little high, $165,000.
You think it's higher than they're going to collect?
How come this is South Patterson?
I don't know why that is the name of the fund.
Was that a new?
That was, there was a fund established previously and that was the name and so they're reusing it, the fund number.
Oh.
It was closed down.
What was it? From, how, from when? Way back when?
Way.
How far back? I'd begun entering.
A hundred and a half years. That is when they had a Lake Management District.
Or they tried before.
Well, they had one.
Okay.
And then they kind of stopped.
They had one and disbanded it?
Yeah.
Oh, really? Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, because Paula Lowe was telling me the history about it. And she said that the way that they operated beforehand was differently. It was more kind of an informational Lake Management District where they would offer information out to the members. And it was only for one section because the other section of the lake didn't want to participate, so.
So depending on how much money they actually believe that they'll be collecting in any given year, you may want to adjust the amount if this is going to be a loan. You may want to consider, do you want to make it a first-year grant? Or, you know, what do we really want to do here?
I thought, and I think you were suggesting the same thing. I thought they were needing a little bit of money. So like the first thing I think they're going to do is an RFP for developing their IVAM plan or whatever. We didn't want to delay. So whatever they would need to get that contractual work going prior to the first collection. And I didn't think it would be a full year's worth of collection. So if 165 is a full year, it might be $50,000 loan.
Might be much less.
And as another issue just to think about, I don't think we ought to refer to it as the South Patterson because somebody's going to feel left out. That's all of them. Rather, just for our convenience, I think it ought to be Patterson Lake if that's what it gets voted on.
We can certainly ask financial services if they will change the name of the fund. If it's a fund that already existed, we just picked up and used, it's a remnant. But we can ask them to change the fund name. All right, so that's the discussion that needs to happen around this.
Tim Wilson should know the answer to that, I think.
To what?
How much?
Tim Wilson should know if it was to seed money.
Yeah, we've got it.
Like, tie it.
Somewhere in the materials, we've seen this, a rough dollar amount. I just can't remember what it is right now.
And I have the same recollection as Commissioner Edwards.
A small amount, not a lot.
We were, yeah, we were just going to kind of fund their, that first initial IVAM for them to be able to prepare for years to come.
This might include the staffing they will need.
It does.
Uh huh. So part of the reason it's so high is they need an FTE to support the new district. So the price of the FTE is included in this.
I thought they were not going to do a full FTE. I thought they were only going to do half an FTE.
Half an FTE for each district, but you've got another district forming and I...
That's a recommendation by staff that may or may not be needed. I guess that's the best way to put it. We're going to have more discussion of it.
Okay. And now's not the time?
No, I mean, now's not it, right?
Right. Right. So continuing on. Page 19 is, these are your utility district. There are rate increases being proposed. So you see the amount of revenue increasing and then the expenditures also increased. Does the Board have a briefing on the rate increases for the utilities?
Yeah, they did.
Then on page 20, we have $160,000 proposed to be paid out of the Storm and Surface Water Utility Account to support the Capital Lake Gushut Estuary Long-Term Management Project. And that would become a regular contribution from the county.
Okay, I'm just going to make one comment on that that I'm not sure of. I mean, this will be a decision by the Board. Over in Tri-Cities, the federal government developed the atomic bomb during World War II. And then they had some problems, cleanup, all that kind of stuff is pending yet today. That was solely the federal government. They're not going to Benton County and saying, well, we want you to help us get this mess cleaned up. They're not going to the state to say that. They're doing it. That lake was created 100% by the state of Washington. And the problems therein, I'm not saying they're not, everybody's trying to fix it. But that was put in place by the state of Washington for the benefit of all the residents of the state of Washington at the state expense. And I don't see myself being very supportive of spending a lot of our General Fund money on doing the state's job of cleanup. So I'm just going to, I want to put that seed out there that's where I'm coming from. That's all I'm...
There is no General Fund money in this proposal?
Local money. That's where I'm coming from.
I would respond to that by saying that if this, the state stopped doing whatever it should have been doing in the eighties.
They quit. I know.
So we can't just have this.
That's the problem.
So the answer is we either solve this this way or we need to go to court. If you're right that they have to do it, then we need them to do it. I'm not going to just go, well, they're not doing it. So we're just going to let the centerpiece of our county just continue to decay into, you know... So either we find this solution or we go to court. But I'm not going to accept that that as a defense to finding a solution. We got to have a solution. Community's been working on this for a couple decades.
I'm ready to go to court, but you can tell this is a future discussion. And that's why I bring it up. That's all.
I have a question about this because I understand what's in the MOU, but they're not going to start collecting this in 2023, are they? Am I wrong about that?
No, I think it's, I think it's 2024 because the legislature needs to appropriate.
And this is a maybe down the road.
Right. I mean, I'm seeing it here and it's good that we're talking about it because we've got some legal agreements to sign. But I don't think it's going to be $160,000 out of 2023.
Okay, good.
I think it's a commitment we'll make that might, you know, hit us in the future down there. But just, I'll have to double check that. But I think there's a delay because the legislative act that Ramirez was talking about, then there's the whole construction of the estuary and before there'd be any, I mean...
I think it's 33 before they really figure, I'm getting moving.
It's seven years to finish the whole.
So the conversation among yourselves is going to be coming sooner, rather than later. Because we're just working on finalizing an MOU with the state and all the jurisdictions, which includes portions of this contribution. And there's an MOU, there's not any local agreement. And that MOU needs to approve by the legislative authorities. So as soon as we have a final draft, I will bring that for your discussion.
More to come.
Right. And we will put this money, whatever amount it ends up being, definitely a placeholder. And we'll put it in the appropriate year, whenever year that may be.
But I don't think it's this year. I think I agree with Ty. It's not.
Okay. Well, then, you know, we can take it out when the time comes.
Depending how quickly we can get through the ILAs, that's going to be a lot of...
Right. Now, on page 21, there is a request that is an increase in funding for the parks. And this is one of the priorities from the Y Board. An increased funding for parks. This is a General Fund request for $338,000 to increase the level of service delivery and care for our parks. This also includes $110,000. How many, that is for vehicles for the new park staff. And this is the addition of two maintenance staff. And I believe it also includes one-time purchases. So $188,000 of it is for the staff, would be ongoing. And then one-time purchases for tools, equipment, and vehicles to support the staff in the amount of $135,000. So...
More to come.
Yep. Next, on page 22, line 56, the change request is M3421. This is from the Roads Fund. And Public Works is asking for a $60,000 increase for the road development review of cost of services study. Again, paid for by the Road Fund. Line 57...
Do you know what the intent, can we at least hear what the intent of that expenditure is?
It says that a rate study was recommended in a state audit so that we have information to establish appropriate rates for our internal and external customers.
And you have an item tomorrow on your agenda. We reviewed that in last week, related to our request for proposals. So in our request for proposals for the fee study includes contributions from CPED, Public Works, and Environmental Health to assess all the fees. And this is the Public Works.
The road portion, okay. Then we have lines 57 and 58 are requests from Public Works coming out of the Solid Waste and the Storm and Surface Water Utility Funds. This would extend the end date of an accountant assistant three position that is supporting the ERP. Because the timeline on the TC Connect got extended. So they need this person a little longer. And that is so we can decommission the cams. Page 23 is, line 59 is from your planning department. This $75,000 from the General Fund would increase professional services that would be used for expediting completion of some docket items. So rather than asking for FTEs, they would add to the current amount of professional services. And this again was something from the Commissioner Priority Exercise. Line 60, M3602, that also includes line 61. This would shift from the Storm and Surface Water Program to the General Fund. The cost of an education and outreach specialist, only a portion of their time. Once again, they'd like to reallocate some of this person's time. They spend 100% of their time right now on communication related to the Storm and Surface Water Utility. They would shift part of that person's time to also do outreach and education regarding the Growth Management Act. And that would need to be paid by the General Fund. So...
That's what again?
$15,000. That's line 60 on page 23. It's $15,000 for CPED out of the General Fund to do communication efforts around the Growth Management Act.
What, well, we'll get more to come, I guess.
First look. Line 62 at the top of page 24 is from the Large System Replacement Reserve. Again, the ERP project or TC Connect. The timeline has... The timeline has been extended for that project. We need additional time for the project positions that were already approved by the board to complete the transition for financial services and payroll modules. And then line sixty-three is a request for an additional FTE that would help us stand up the budget module. And that work won't even start until January. So we need additional support there. And again, those come out of the Large IT Reserve Fund. Line sixty-four is a general fund item from the Sheriff. M thirty-eight oh-seven. This is to add mobile command terminal operating costs to the IP budget. So this is technology. Patty, do they currently pay for this out of the Sheriff's budget? And now they'd like for it to come from IT?
No, I don't know. I will have to check on that one.
We will find out more about what exactly this item is.
Yes, it's, um, current replacement costs are collected in IT reserves and data services were collected in ERNR. This moves the full cost into the IT budget.
But it's a hit on the general fund. So that's what we're gonna have to check on there. If, if they're currently paying it, why do they need more to pay it?
Does it need to be compatible with this new system that they're putting in? And if so, why isn't that being?
I don't know what's going on here. We'll, we'll learn more. Line sixty-six is coming from the Environmental Health Fund for Public Health. This is the request to remove the end dates from how many positions? Hold please. How many?
Hold please.
How many?
Hold, hold please. For a minute, I thought she said fourteen.
Oh, hold, oh, okay.
What?
It says listed above, but I didn't see it.
Right, that's what it says, but we don't see that. So we'll find out how many FTEs that is, but it's three hundred and nine thousand from the Environmental Health Fund on an ongoing basis. They asked to remove the end dates.
And when they say Environmental Health Fund, that's just not a magic spot. So where's that, where's three hundred thousand come from? That would go in the.
That's the foundational public.
Foundation, foundational public health.
Yeah, but didn't state fund that?
Yeah, that's.
We.
It is coming?
Yeah, so you, I think in two weeks, you, the board has a briefing to give you a perspective on all the foundational public health money. And it's, a lot of money is.
Are you speaking to the board?
A lot of money is.
A lot of money is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing.
And, and in fact, I, I just leave a preview. Because of the amount of money the public health is receiving, they need financial help because the department, well, Public Health and Social Services.
No, they're getting some money, you said.
But they need financial help to process all the money. So you will see.
What is it coming in one dollar bills or what?
Okay, you, perhaps, perhaps I'm, perhaps I'm not, I'm not, I'm not clear. Money is coming from the state to the Department of Public Health.
Yeah.
And the Department of Public Health and Social Services do not have the staff to manage the additional money. So you will see two items, two positions they will ask the board to create as soon as possible to help manage all that funding because we're.
Out of what, out of what fund would that come?
Out of the foundational public.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
Yeah, it's gonna come out of the foundation. It's not coming out of general fund. It's gonna come out of the public health fund.
Yeah, okay.
Because we're missing, we're missing, we're missing some bills that we'll need to process.
There, there we are. They badly need financial help.
But more to come on that conversation, Commissioner.
Josh, good.
Yeah. Um, so this is removing the end dates off four positions.
You say they need financial help. Sounds like they need money. So I would come up with a different term. They need, they need staffing expertise or.
They need staff to manage, they need, they need accounting staff.
Fiscal staff.
Let's say they need accounting staff.
Well, a lot of times when we get staff money.
My apologies wasn't clear.
That's what I think was confusing us.
Yeah.
So I think they need, they need.
They badly need staff.
Sometimes, sometimes when we get staff money and they would allow users are gonna help or administrate you over you.
That's right.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what this is.
Okay.
And that department has had so much money pouring in that they are way behind. They need accounting staff. Moving on. So at the top of page twenty-five, line sixty-seven, also from the Environmental Health Fund. They are requesting a business application analyst one. It's a hundred and twenty thousand. And this person would be the public health side of someone to help manage Amanda.
The new Amanda.
Yeah, the new Amanda, the Amanda replacement.
So we're not getting any more efficiency out of Amanda? It's gonna cost us more FTEs to.
We're gonna need an IT person to manage it.
We're replacing a bunch.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, but I think of upgrades in technology as a reduction in FTEs as a general rule. That's the way it worked when I was.
Well, um, but I think it's, the request is to have somebody who can actually manage the system. At, at this point, the Amanda is just a repository that is really is not effective.
Right. So the other thing that this person would be doing, they would be working on the system and then they would also participate in efforts to develop model public health programs. Line sixty-eight is funding from Treatment Sales Tax. The BHO has requested additional funding because the True Blood funds are coming to an end. So they are asking for funding from Treatment Sales Tax from the state to be able to continue to provide services to people who are in our jails.
No, we're gonna have to recognize at some point that Treatment Sales Tax is gonna be a reduced fund for.
The, the sales tax piece not coming in as strong as it had been, but that fund is the fund that you, you, the board can't seem to spend. Ending fund balance is crazy high.
Okay. Okay, just could be less.
I think it's a, I think it's a combination. I think the board has been proactive in allocating expenditures, but the expenditures by the programs are no materialized in the way that it is. A lot of reversion.
That's true.
We allocate and they just don't.
Um, sort of reverse.
They don't.
Center, there's a lot of reversion.
You, you, yeah, talked about a imbalanced budget, but it, so much money just comes pouring back every year.
Can I go back to line sixty-seven?
Yes.
So Amanda, I'm just calling Amanda because I know it's the replacement, but I think of that as a CPED system. I understand Environmental Health and Public Works are involved in permitting process, but are they coordinated when they make these requests? So that, are we gonna see a duplicative request from CPED and Public Works? Because they all afraid they don't have the technology in house, but they're not talking together because, you know what I'm saying? Like, are they working together to make a united, sensible, coordinated request?
CPED has a business analyst that is dedicated to managing this system.
But they can't help Environmental Health do their part of it?
Well, they're, they're, this, you're, you're going back to some history here that precedes all of you on why public health needs its own person. And I think that that would be.
Well, there's some coordination, there's coordination issues over there that have to do with permitting for your, your subject system.
There, there are, and I know that Josh has worked very hard with his counterparts in both those other two departments to talk about what a coordinated process would be. So I know that they're already talking about that. You'll see when we review the upcoming schedule for October that we're bringing Josh in. This is certainly something we could also bring in Kurt to talk about, but it's.
Because the.
To assure, to assure your question, Commissioner, yes, that has, is a coordinated effort. The whole Amanda replacement has been in the works, as you know, for months. And all the three departments who have a state and Amanda system have been heavily involved in coordinating the implementation of this.
Actually, that's years, isn't it?
Yeah, it's been, it's been talked about since I got in the.
Yeah.
So.
So it's been years.
I don't understand to his point, like, you know, CPED has a business analyst, like, why can't that person, if it's the same program, help public health or Public Works?
What I saw at the atrium is the, the new layout is they're gonna be next door to each other.
Well, um, because they, they're, the system, the new system hopefully will bring in and we, we house all the different permitting processes. CPED, Public Health, and Public Works. Right? But what you're saying is, I'm sorry.
No, go, because I guess my next point too, right, is we're working on this new process where everyone's gonna be on this coordinated timeline. We have this new system that's gonna help keep everyone on this coordinated timeline. I don't know if it's a time to debate this, but I'm just, I'm struggling with, with what Commissioner Mensah has laid out in that coordination where I'm not seeing that coordination. And I understand what you're trying to say, like, but if all these things that we're, we've been saying that everyone's gonna be on the same page for a process and that this system was supposed to help with that process and that everyone was going to be on that same timeline, then having different IT people help with the same system, the same process in different departments, it, it just doesn't seem to connect for me.
So, so I'm, I'm trying to recall the discussion from a number of years ago when this was raised. And I, what I seem to recall is that the person working in CPED that their time is completely consumed because what you have to do in a system is update it constantly for code changes, changes in rates, any other types of changes that would impact how the system works to support the process. And that just the amount of changes on the CPED side took up all that person's time. And there's an equal amount of stuff that changes on the environmental health side. And that's what that business analyst would be updating is everything there. I think it totally is a reasonable request from the board to ask to hear from the directors about how they're going to coordinate. You might also wonder how Public Works fits into this, who's supporting their stuff. They are not asking for a position, I don't think. But, you know, it's, it's my understanding that there is enough of a workload on that system for more than one application analyst.
In, in the system, I believe it's going to be exactly where you have to for manager. And, and, and that is the intent of, of, of the system is to have a coordinated effort. So a, a property owner developer sees only one set of comments coming in into the system so they know exactly where their, their application is in the process of approval. That is the key. And the, and the, and the timelines, the Commissioner Mihia outlined is also included on this. It's just a tool that allows us to have the, the timeline. The, the three departments have agreed already. But in the background, you need somebody who coordinates each of those elements in order for the, the end user, the public, to see a single face. But certainly, I believe the board wants to have more information and will bring the departments to hear more about this.
I guess another point I would like to know too is, you know, will there be an end date to this position? Because as the program starts running smoothly again, why are we gonna have a different position for each of the departments when?
Because even when the, when the software is up and running, there are constant changes to how we do business and that's gotta be what's updated in the system.
And you need to see a conversation that you already, you had earlier with a, a request from Public Defense. Is it a full-time or is it a half-time? Because Public Defense, although, you know, they implemented the E Defender and the E Prosecutor, you know, there is a need in the backend to support that. So it's, it's a good question whether it's a full-time or part-time position.
It's the same system. I mean, it's even a stronger argument potentially than E Defender and E Prosecutor, especially because they're both departments, which is good, you know. John Tunheim Shop is a run-by-elected official. And they're, they have, you know, lawyers have confidentiality and you have to have that wall and all that.
Bar lawyers, right.
But here, we're, we're trying to integrate everybody into a seamless whole, so there might even be a stronger argument for somebody that can bridge that gap. I don't know. I don't have a good sense of the workload.
That is an excellent conversation to have. All right. And then we got this Treatment Sales Tax item.
And that was, okay, that was only.
Sixty.
Oh, that's about True Blood?
Yep.
And that's coming from BHO?
Yes. We need to, we need to be able to, and yes, and, and the TST is one of the funds that you'll review in the first week of October.
We, we knew that was coming, since we received the True Blood grant.
We knew that eventually would end and we'd need to replace it.
We knew that at that point. Yeah, and, and it was the, the agreement with, uh, the, what is the, um.
Disability Rights of Washington?
Disability Rights of Washington. It was not a temporary based on, the services based on the availability of the grant. It was a commitment by the county to continue the services.
All right, um, page twenty-six, line sixty-nine is a request from the Department of Public Health to remove the end dates of fiscal staff.
Fund.
The fund I am betting is the Public Health Fund.
Probably.
Uh, Fund fifteen hundred. And then the next line would go with it, Fund seventy would probably be Fund fourteen hundred.
There's separate requests, so they're asking for, the end dates are already December twenty-twenty-three. They wanna remove the end dates after twenty-three. They wanna have the end dates removed now so that they can recruit. Because if they're telling the people that the positions are temporary, they don't think they, they're afraid that they wouldn't be able to fill them.
Because they're unsealed.
Right.
Yes.
So that's why they wanna remove the end dates now. That's why there's no cost showing in twenty-twenty-three because that's already built into their budget.
You're finding that it's difficult to fill financial staff positions, as so many of our career paths. That's one of them. So the finance positions is line sixty-nine. And line seventy is removing end dates for the housing social services positions. And the, the money that supports these positions is not one-time money. Part of it was put in place from COVID, but we have additional beds coming in, pouring in from the state and the feds that would support both of these. So that is all of the policy requests and the impact on the general fund in total in two thousand and twenty-two is seven hundred and five thousand dollars. We've no additional revenue in twenty-two. And in twenty-three, you've got additional revenue of ninety-eight thousand, but requests of five point three million. So more to come in October.
So can I ask one more thing for October?
Yep.
Um, and I know we're gonna have, you, you have requested a briefing for the market study and to kinda see where we're at. But I would kinda want to know if there's a possibility on, you know, how much we should set aside for the market study, like, is, like, how much should we have in as kind of a cushion for us to be able to prepare once we receive those results? Because that, for me, I'm, in these policy decisions, I'm also considering that as well, right? It's like, well, how much are we, do we need to keep a, set aside for that market study as it comes in? And whether we decide to do it all at once, which I don't think that's gonna be even an option really, or, or do it by phases? I, I would wanna have that already kind of built in into our policy on this is how much we're going to be set aside. That's really important to me.
Good. Good afternoon. All right. Couple other quick things. First, you had asked to. Um, first you had asked to, uh, question that we were gonna try to answer um, by showing you this dollar. Uh, the question was, which of the taxing jurisdictions are subject to the one percent cap on property tax levy? And
Are you on page twenty-seven?
I am, I am done, I am done with the review of the line items. Did you have more you'd like to talk about that before we move on to other things?
No, 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 I just, uh,
We're at the dollar.
Yep.
Okay.
We're moving on.
Forty-two of the document.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so you can just about split this dollar right down the line. Because the state and schools, this big piece that is sixty point eight-one cents on the dollar is not subject to the one percent property tax increase cap. And everything on the other side are the local taxing jurisdictions. Those are all subject to the one percent cap. It's that easy.
It's kinda like general fund and all other in the county, something sixty, forty.
State and local schools are not. And the reason that local schools are not is the vast majority, if not all of their bonds are unlimited general obligation bonds, meaning they are not limited to a, um, cap on the levy. They're all voter-approved.
But they're voter-approved.
They're all voter-approved. Yep.
So, so when the assessments go up on the property, it's not, um, sixty, thirty-nine percent of folks' taxes don't go up hardly at all because they're one percent capped, but the other sixty-one percent would go up proportionally. So it won't be exact, it'll be somewhere in the middle between, you know, a dollar for dollar versus a one percent. Uh, I mean, I always talk about, my, my mind's always focused on the county. But if you look at the whole property tax dollar of a, of a normal tax, property-owning taxpayer,
Right.
the, if their assessment goes up, let's say twenty percent, their property tax might go up twelve percent.
Right, and we'll update. I had a little chart that I prepared last year that I'll do again. Um, that says if the value of your home increased this much, here's what the property tax rate increased or decreased this much. And so the increase in the taxes specifically for the general fund was X. And you can see that, um, the county's rate goes down and any increase in property tax is due to the value of, of your home going up. It's not because the county has raised the, the levy. All things being equal.
But the public doesn't pay much attention.
No, it, 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 the, the public sees just the increase in value as a result, the potential increase.
They say, what, what happened to that one percent thing? What happened to that one percent?
Right, yeah. But we were, we were responding to the question. Um, there is one financial plan in your package. I thought we would have a few more, but one, one was ready for today. We'll have more in October. Um, this is the risk insurance fund. And this right here, what you see when you look on the revenue line, um, is the necessary increase in the rates. First, first you see the twenty-twenty-two budget compared to the twenty-twenty-two estimate. And when you look at the expenses for services down on this line, you see that we thought we'd be paying two point six million to the risk pool. And instead, we're gonna be paying out three point nine million to the risk pool. So our cost to buy insurance went up by about one point three million dollars.
Fifty percent.
Yep. Um, to cover that, then you go up to the revenue line. And we have to increase revenue, and these are rates on all the other funds, um, to make this fund whole. Because when we pay out the new amount for twenty-two, that will bring our ending fund balance to down to about two point eight million. So we have to get that back up to four million dollars. And we'll do the math and we'll come back to you in October and tell you how close four million is to the eighty percent required amount. I don't have that right now.
Is that versus eighty-eight?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know how close this is, so we gotta find out. This might be eighty percent. So don't, don't think that we've got a lot of room to go down just yet. Um, but just to get it to four million, you'll see the revenue in twenty-three. We've popped that up to three point nine. And then, then we, we had planned on collecting three nine. Now we're gonna, uh, add the money to that that you see in this budget. That'll bring it up to seven point two million. That's what it needs to be to make this fund whole. And then it drops back down again just to a steady amount of a little over six billion a year to keep us at a, a four million dollar fund balance. So we'll work with Tammy on what is eighty percent? It might be this number right here.
And, and, and you touched base on the services, which is how much we paid to the risk pool. The line item and budget in two thousand and twenty-two, the estimate is three point nine. But if we just compare it with the budget in two thousand and twenty-two, two point six million to the forecast in twenty-twenty-three is five point five, the other way.
Right. Right, it went up one point three million this year and Tammy says it's going to go up a similar amount next year. It, it's going up. So the direction to bring a proposal next year, does it make sense to purchase our insurance elsewhere?
We'll, we'll look into it next year.
Yeah. So that's
Unless you get rid of that.
Can you do the several lines?
Showing the liability, it ain't gonna matter. It, it will never get a better deal, I don't think.
Yeah, absolutely. But that's enough to buy. Try that.
They better start paying attention to it pretty quick.
Uh, next, we're gonna look at what the schedule is for the first week in October. We have, looking to see if I've got that. And here it is. Um, and I will share it. So we have four days, uh, booked for you in the first week of October. We did not book a budget work session on Tuesday. You'll continue to do your normal agenda setting and then the afternoon, um, business meeting on Tuesday that week. Um, on the October third, uh, we will have a forecast update for you. Um, by that time, we will have new numbers, uh, for September on the sales tax to see if the five percent trend is holding. Um, we'll have property tax calculation updates. We get those many times, uh, from the assessor from now until the levy is certified. Um, and then any new information that comes forward, we'll share at that time. Uh, and then October third, we will go through, just like we did today. We'll go through all of the budget line items. Today you looked at revenue, policy and maintenance changes. We'll also bring forward the grants, the internal service lines, uh, and any other miscellaneous lines. Um, but you've seen the big ones today. But we'll go through those again. And if you recall, um, we have you on the initial do a high, medium, low so that we can take you back and, and, uh, give you feedback on your rankings, how close they are and see how close that gets us to what to fund and what might fall off. Um, so that will be on October third. And also on October third, um, we'll invite Jennifer Walker to come talk to you about the parks proposal and we'll add the LMD for Patterson Lake to that. Then on Wednesday, October fifth, continue review of the budget changes um, and start to review the major funds. And the major funds other than the general fund, REIT, detention sales tax, um, the ERNR fund, um, which has a funding issue, treatment sales tax. We will bring forward the fair, um, and the permit fund. And Josh will join us, uh, to talk about those two funds. Um, and then that might also be a good day. We'll figure out which day to bring Josh to talk, Josh, Kurt, and Jennifer to talk about the, uh, Amanda replacement. Then on October sixth, we'll look at the historic expenditure trends. And at that time, we'll have analysis for you on why the money was reverted from each individual officer department, how much of it was due to vacancies, how much was due to other things. We'll also ask the sheriff on that day to come talk about the medical services at the jail. Um, Public Health will be invited in to talk again about foundational public health, which you'll be hearing some, some about in the next week or so. Uh, and then the other service requests that they have. And, uh, you had asked some questions that are gonna take us a little time to get the answers to. An analysis of the timber revenue, uh, the reduced revenues for the DUIs and, um, any additional requests that we took today. Um, so like the, um, auditors revenue, we'll invite Marion. Um, District Court will have information about the adult probation position. Um, Public Defense for their data management system and any other things that, that, uh, staff have, have gathered as, as we've talked today. And then on October seventh, I don't remember to keep the screen going with where I'm at. Um, again, continue to respond to your request for information. Uh, we'll invite, um, Maria Aponte in to talk about the comp class study and, uh, Tammy Devlin to talk about the risk pool. And we'll end looking at the forecast model to see where we're at.
Can we get, um, when, when you get timber revenue, how much information do you get from the state about the breakdown of what that is from? You know, this clear cut, that clear cut, this source, that source? Do we get that kind of information?
I'll have to look.
I would be very curious about that.
I don't think we do. I think we get
We'll just get a check, a check and then for an amount of
Amalgamated amount.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Amorphous.
We get, we get, um, we get some information on the projected sales by sale, by, by anticipated sale.
It's totally different sales.
I know we must get information about where the timber was harvested because the amount of money is distributed between the taxing jurisdictions for that area.
Yeah, that's true.
So I'll see what we can get.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trust, whether it's in trust or recovery land or
That they must be able to tell us because we have to book it against certain bars codes depending on what it is. So I know I get that much information, but the where, I know we get something on that because we know what the taxing jurisdictions are. Um, okay. Anything else you would like us to cover? That first week in October is gonna be an information week. And getting some preliminary ideas of where you might like to go. No decisions in that week. And then the last week in October is when we need you to make decisions.
So, uh, when are we gonna find out the difference between Darren's estimate and maybe yours or something?
The difference between Darren's estimate, almost the entire amount is that I include lost revenue and he doesn't. One point five million is the bulk of the variance between me and Darren right now.
How come that is? Why, why do you?
I didn't ebook lost revenue because he uses a different method to do his forecast. He, he goes on historic trend plus what's remaining in the budget. And, uh, Nicole now and, and I have always done an analysis of the line-by-line item of, uh, revenues and the expenditures projected by each office and department. So it's a very different type of analysis.
The revision part.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's not unusual. They start a little bit like this at the beginning of the year. And at the end, they match pretty well.
Pretty darn close. Yep.
Who wins?
The county.
We're all winners.
Don't you keep track of who's closer?
Who's closer?
The county wins.
Oh, I got pretty excited the year that I was less than a hundred thousand off um, out of a hundred million dollars. That was, that was pretty good. Um, but, uh, I'd, I'd say we're, we're, both of us relatively close. And, and, uh, we're all winners.
Which is good because they're coming from two different
Yeah, using two completely different methods. Uh, and we get close and it's, it's good. It's a good check and balance. So the last thing we wanna do today is bring it back the model and we're gonna see how much can you really afford? I need to show it. All right. So you saw all the requests and you saw that if we strip out, I mean, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda step through this. You wouldn't strip out the grants. The grants are bringing in enough money in revenue to cover the grant request. So you would not do those. And the other revenue adjustments you saw, the money's just not coming in. So there's, it would not make sense to say, no, you can't reduce the revenue for passports because it's not gonna come and you would overstate your revenues.
Unless we thought that the auditor was wrong and it was gonna come.
Yeah, but it's not.
But obviously, we don't have a basis to say
No, absolutely not. And you can't tell the auditors, start doing tech passports instead of like recording.
Do we have that sheet in here?
We do.
Do you have a copy on that, uh, earlier version? Like here is gonna be an interactive.
She's gonna change mine.
Yeah, but that one doesn't look the same as mine here either.
Yeah, it does. It looks like this one right here. Got it?
Got it.
All right.
Yep.
So you're, you can't say no, you can't reduce revenue, so I'm not gonna change that. The seven hundred and fifty-six thousand is an increase from the indirect plan. We wouldn't change that. The midterm policy level, what is this, ninety-eight thousand dollars? It's all one thing and it's related to grants, I believe, so you really wouldn't change that. Um, so if we start taking things out, and I'm just gonna remove certain things and keep this handy so I can put it back in in the right amount. Um, if
I mean, is it, just looking at my seatmates, I mean, is there any point in saying we're not gonna give call us when
No, we've already, we've already agreed. That's what I'm saying, I don't
We won't give COLAs. So we won't take the, all right.
There are certain things not worth...
No, I think, no, I believe the option is whether you ask the offices and departments to cover that. So isn't it, you're not necessarily stated no cost of living increases.
And we would say you have to...
Now you have to absorb.
Squeeze out your...
Will I place somebody off somewhere else or something?
Let's start by eliminating all the policy level requests other than the 98,000 that's covered by revenue. So if you take those out, then your graph looks like this. You're still not up where you need to be.
All policy level out.
That's all the policy level out except for the 98,000 that's covered by revenue. All gone. And you saw a lot of those things are, are high need things.
I'll have the risk pool, if we go, instead of the ADA, we go to the AD.
We don't know that.
Well, we don't know, we don't know. 4 million might be at 80. I might have got it down to 80 already, so we don't know. But let's say we only did half this much for risk. I'm already taking half out as one time.
For rent, did you say?
For risk, risk, the risk pool contribution. Let's say you only put in a million. And that you did not continue that into the future. Then the graph looks a little better and you've at least recovered by 2030. The indirect rates, you've already approved and those funds to be held, they have to be there. And then the, the operating carry forward is a net zero thing. You could say no to that. That gets you a little closer. And we can scrub the maintenance level. So this is, what does this add up to? This is about 4.7 million. That is a big expenditure amount in a midterm. That's, I would say that overall, you could afford about four to four and a half million dollars of spend. So if we start to move these numbers around, if you absorb something in one place, you could add something somewhere else. But I'm saying that you need to hit roughly 4 million or less in ongoing costs.
Is October traditionally a down year on sales tax revenue? Certain months are kind of traditional, is that one of them?
It's August. So well, if you think about the quarterly payers, I think, I think that might be one of the months that the quarterly payers come in. But I think that might hit in November, I'd have to look. All right, I'm going to stop sharing.
Well, this is depressing.
Well, I think it's going to be more depressing as we get going ourselves.
So my recommendation is that you not add more than 4 million in expenditures to, and that would, I'll have to sort out how much of that is grants and how much it might come to roughly 3 million in...
You might find 100,000 in unnecessary gas billings.
Well, we might, we might. But you might be able to shift some of those expenses into detention sales tax. You might be able to cover something with treatment sales tax. We might come up with, you know, some other funding source for some of these requests.
Include some of the reversion and bringing back...
You might think of increasing the...
To supplement some of the expenses.
You know, like what an average year or something is? 3% on reversion on the budget?
An average year is 3%, we've been seeing 8.
I know, now we're, right, we have, but I think that has to do with this whole virus thing, right?
I agree.
But what about the treatment sales tax? What's reversion there? That's more like about 25% or better.
It is crazy high and for whatever reason, the offices and departments that have appropriation out of the treatment sales tax don't spend it. They don't spend it all.
So that might give us a little flexibility.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, that, that fund, just even when you adjust the sales tax down, there is money in that fund. One of the things that you haven't seen here that I strongly urge you to consider and I'm going to see if Kurt is willing to bring forward is spending out of the veterans fund. There is way too much money sitting in the veterans fund. And I think that you absolutely, even though midterm is not the time to consider policy things, I think you should for the veterans fund because we've got to start spending that fund down.
Well, I know there's going to be a request coming in from one of the veterans clubs for some assistance on the South County Hub. I know that's coming, I don't know what it's going to entail.
Hub?
There's, there's a hub out in Yelm that they do the same thing Lacy does.
It's too far to drive to Lacy?
Yeah, probably, just the convenience of it. There's quite a, quite a veterans community out there. We've got about 30,000 veterans, you know, in Thurston County.
So I'm working with Kurt and Mark to bring a proposal around food insecurity from the veterans fund.
How are they doing on that pilot program? They were going to pick a few people and I thought the idea was if it was going good, they would recommend expansion. Is that still...
They started with one.
Right.
I have not...
We haven't heard back.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, I hadn't heard follow-up on that. Thumbs up, thumbs down. Helped, didn't help?
Okay, 247, any other items, Robyn?
That is all I had for you today.
May I share us any last remaining questions before we adjourn?
Not on this topic.
Okay, well, thank you all very much, we are adjourned.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.